Long Beach City Council. At first, we're going to have some proclamations in honor of Women's History Month. Believe it or not, Women's History Month has only been in existence since 1995 in the U.S. And prior to that, it was Women's History Week, started in 1982. So we've worked our way up to a month, and I think we're very proud to hear the honorees that we have this evening. Donna?
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to say that we have chosen Ms. Jokhara Odom. Ms. Odom, or Ms. Jack, or Ms. Odom. As she is referred to, has been an indispensable member of our community for decades. This city council administration are happy to acknowledge all of her works throughout the city of Long Beach. Ms. Odom, Ms. Odom has been instrumental in bringing and bridging the people of our city together before the storm and after the storm. Ms. Odom is a person anyone can go to with whom he's guidance and comfort. She is fierce, she is brave, and she can be known to be stubborn at times. A characteristic that sometimes comes in quite handy when dealing with some people in our city. Most recently, Ms. Odom has been a fighter and champion for the healthcare in Long Beach. She is a member of the Beach Debate Civic Association, as well as the founder of the Concerned Citizens of North Park. She was instrumental in the establishment of the Martin Luther King Community Center. A list of her accomplishments and contributions to our community are too many to list tonight. Ms. Odom currently is a member of the city's planning advisory board, as well as the Centennial Committee for the City of Long Beach. She serves on the city's crisis intervention team and on our police department's police reform committee. She is part of the team advising or advancing the Narcan training in the city of Long Beach that is presented throughout the various neighborhoods with the Long Beach Police Department. Most importantly, Ms. Odom is a friend, and we all know she's an excellent cook. The city of Long Beach is pleased to recognize her this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, Jokhara Odom.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next up, the city council and city administration would like to acknowledge Dawn Tress Passol. I met Dawn Tress at the February Women's History Month at the library sponsored by the North Park Community Development Room, and she was sitting in St. Harvey, and she told me, and she told the audience this story, that she was the first woman of color to swim in Nassau County at the age of nine. Harvey getting a shout out.
And then I started with the Long Beach Recreation and I continue on. And when I was in ninth grade, I swam for Long Beach High School, JB, in the ninth grade successfully. And then I went on to swim in high school in Washington for three years successfully. So I am honored to share that experience, which is, I think, very unique. And to be the first female African American to swim throughout Nassau County successfully. And I just want to say that I'm very proud to be a Long Beacher, and I definitely have sand in my shoes always. And I want to thank all of this, and this city of Long Beach for this time. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a big list. We have here, hopefully, I'd like to recognize, we'd like to recognize all the following. Anna Pedagight, Karen Lindman-Herd, Margarita Tamarit, Eileen Devary, Jean Marie Fitch, Donna Hood, Kathleen Kraus, Elizabeth Suévas, Danielle King, Lena Diamond, Eileen Devary, Catherine Lewis, Patricia Salinas, Julia Chiong, I'm so sorry because I have a name that's butchered, so I apologize, Julia Chion Alexis, Valerie Lucas, Frances Rivera, Bonnie Girth, Amanda Giordano, Gabrielle Gustafson, Megan Halsted, Deana Kassenbaum, Shannon Kugler, Shannon McKay, Ashley Rafe, Shelby Saroka, Alexandra Williams, Stephanie Mara, Judy Arroyo, Alexandra Nielsen, Alyssa Gentile, Alyssa McMorrow, Kristin Murphy, Jamie Price, Ingrid Rushing, Kathy Schwenk, Lisa Zazdruprea. And what they all have in common?
And Kristin Devary.
Oh, Kristin Devary, sorry. What they all have in common is they are our community's women first responders. Come on up here tonight. Yeah, come on up, please. If I call you, please. From COVID, standing to all emergencies and fires in between and ahead of us, we are enormously grateful for the lives these women standing before us have and will impact our city. My quick personal experience is that I am very proud and, you know, very big, I'm very grateful, as we all are to our first responders here. When my mother suffered a stroke in my home seven years ago, PMTs here arrived immediately after a very panicked 911 call, and their quick action and expertise no doubt had saved her life. So I appreciate that. And today is Women's History Month and the 100th year anniversary of our city, that we take this opportunity to honor the contribution to our history you each have made, and how you're paving the path forward for a whole generation of young people, showing them that women are not only natural caretakers, but are strong, brave, and heroic. Thank you. At this point, Councilwoman Bendo has another proclamation to present.
We have another proclamation set tonight, but the gentleman who's receiving it is not able to join us. But two days ago, Long Beach resident Sandy Solo celebrated his birthday. And probably the question asked is, why is that a birthday? Well, mainly because it was his 100th birthday. But in addition to that, it's just worth noting some of the things that Mr. Solo has done that deserve this recognition. Mr. Solo served in the U.S. Army Air Corps during World War II. He served from 1922 to 1947. During that time, he received a Distinguished Flying Cross, an Air Medal, and a Presidential Citation. Those are not awards as a veteran, I can tell you. Those are not awards you get just because you can drink water, beer in the bar than your fellow flyers. These are acknowledgements that are due to sacrifice and a lot of hard work. So we just felt very appropriate to acknowledge Mr. Solo. By the way, Mr. Solo also worked for the city of Long Beach for 18 years as well. So we just thought it was appropriate to acknowledge Mr. Solo, not just for his 100th birthday, but because of the service he gave to this country as well. So we will be sending this proclamation to Mr. Solo. But like I said, unfortunately, he was not able to join us tonight.
Do we make? Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, March 15, 2022, 10:00 p.m. Speaker O'Callaghan, Councilmember Postherly.
Here.
Councilmember Lesko.
Here.
Councilmember Bando.
Here.
Vice President Tressin.
Here.
President McGinnis.
Here.
Director of the Kit, President of the City Manager, Donna Gaden, and Assistant Corporation Councilwoman, Dr. Allison.
Councilwoman Postherly, can you please say the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is in the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The council has, I have two comments to make on behalf of the councilwoman, and then my fellow councilwoman, Tressin, will have a comment as well. And then we'll proceed to the city manager's report. It is on behalf of the entire city staff that we acknowledge the untimely passing of former Police Commissioner Tadaway. We wish, we have heartfelt and deepest sympathies to his wife Darlene, his children, and his entire circle of friends and family. Mr. Police Commissioner, former Police Commissioner Tadaway served the city for over 40 years with the station, and we are very sorry to hear him is passing. Unfortunately, I also have to announce and extend our heartfelt sympathies to the friends and family of employee Anthony D. Cowboy Hemel, a laborer for the sanitation department who served the residents of this city for the past 14 years. Visitation and funeral services will be held this Thursday. If you would like further information, please contact the city manager's office. With that, I pass it over to Councilwoman Tressin.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about things we say and things we don't say in the moment. Public speaking is difficult, and sometimes we get caught up in our nerves and the speak, and things are taken out of context. I think that it is my responsibility, as well as my members of the city council, that when a resident or a member of the city council or a member of the city staff states something in a public setting that requires clarification, then we allow that to happen. Sometimes we don't say something in the moment because we lack the courage to do so. We lack the fortitude. Sometimes we don't say something because we might stamp off the wall. Sometimes we don't say something because we both don't want to hurt someone's feelings or because the moment has passed and we may think it's too late. This is one of those instances. We regret not saying something as a whole when a member of the community stated that there were bad people. In reviewing the tape, I believe that there was no ill will towards anyone, but again, it is all our responsibility to acknowledge what we say and when we say it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tressin. Again, Ms. Tressin is referring to a comment made by a resident at the previous city council meeting, which was disparaging to a sector of our community. Again, our heartfelt apologies. Thank you, Dave. Can you continue?
Thank you.
First item in this hearing is the public hearing for Resolution Right of Parking Parking Requirements, Resolution 966 West Beach Street for a retail convenience store.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I just have a few questions before I pass it off to the council.
Right.
Can you please state your name and address from the record?
Akela Sadie, 966 West Beach Street.
Thank you. Can you please tell us the hours of the days and hours that your business will be open?
It will be seven days from 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m.
And what is the nature of your business?
It's going to be a grocery and gold cuts convenience store.
And how many deliveries do you expect on a daily and weekly basis?
On a weekly basis, how many deliveries? At least 40.
40 deliveries a week?
I'm based in Long Beach, so I'm basing it on that.
And the nature of those deliveries are large truck or van or combination?
Just if they order seven to 10. She began with supply delivery. It's a different perspective, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't get clear. So how many deliveries?
Once or twice a week.
And how many employees do you expect to have?
Myself and one.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Hi.
Mr. Bando?
I just, yeah, I have one. You own seed breeds also. There was an incident SLA issued last year. I just, can you just tell us how your staff will be trained so we ensure this not repeat at the new location?
Yes, after I received the violation for the employee, I had the new employee, I terminated the employee, I had the new employees take their alcohol tobacco test, and everybody's required to have that afterward. I didn't know that was a thing that we were, this is my first time selling beer and stuff. So now everybody has to be served by the state that they took the course.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tressin?
This is a question that I'm going to start to ask from now on. For people that don't know, this is where this hoodie was, I haven't talked on Minnesota. Do you understand what will have any input in making your facility business accessible?
Accessible by?
By, I can't say it. There's a big step.
Yeah, no, I'll do that myself. I'm gonna try to do it myself when I go to the store.
Great.
And if the gentleman needs assistance, should he reach out to you in terms of specs or accessibility or the city?
I'd be tempted to reach out to you without a question or a comment. Wait there, what are you doing?
Any other questions, the council? Questions from the public? Okay, so should we should go ahead and vote on this item? I'd like to close the hearing this time. And so to spare the rest of the agenda, we call the vote right now.
I have order of calling meeting number two. Resolution Right of Parking Parking Requirements, Resolution 966 West Beach Street for a retail convenience store. Would you just move the adoption to this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Rowan, Councilmember Postherly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lesko.
Yes.
Councilmember Bando.
Yes.
Vice President Tressin.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hey, second item says public hearing for purposes providing all persons and representatives of organizations with significant social, economic, and environmental interests an adequate opportunity to openly present their views on proposed activities for the city's community development program for the 2022-2023 48th year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excited to say that we are in the 48th year of CDVG, application of line of changes to look forward to. I will go back to where we were, where we need to be, where we are now with it. Previously, CDVG has been bifurcated, separated as a department, but has very intricate, specific, and monetary values for the city of Long Beach as a whole. Moving forward, the goal was to move for the first two years of my tenure here is to align the goals of the city, our budgeting and our processes together. We have a history of keeping up with, or not keeping up with, but terms completed projects, unused of funds, lengthy processes, funds being dispersed externally to other organizations, with the city still being asked of us, what can the city do to develop the community? We've had a history of about, we went from 990K as far as CDVG funds to 275,000 annually because of some of the history, and then again, this is not a people thing, but just how things have been handled in the department. As a municipality, our overhead is salaries, and we did provide services to the cities. We had the youth and family services department, and only provided childcare. In addition to that, we worked with the recreational department. But after thoughtful analysis, or SWAT analysis, it was a determination to realign, redesign, and reframe what CDVG needs, combining it with community development and opening up or reopening, sorry, my lack of history because I have a Long Beach accent, a youth and family services department, and redesigning this department as a go-through program and service department of CDVG funds, the city funds, and meeting the needs of the community. From that youth and family services, we have identified adult services, youth services, and senior services. Three goals of the youth and family services department to be the needs of those three subgroups. For example, the senior services tomorrow, June 16, will be hosting the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon at the Oceanside Senior Center, taking some of our seniors from the community to the Oceanside. This is a partnership with Nassau County Office of Paging, which is one of the partnerships that the senior services department have developed. We also have a youth council and a arts program for the youth, and the adult services, which is called adult preventive services here. We are creating packages and sending them out to the homeless. With thoughtful research, there already is some packages to the homeless, we decided to supplement that, figure out what's not being provided, and add some of the COVID-friendly preparation items, mouthwash, cleaning materials, a resource card, a resource that they can actually use around the city, and also around Nassau County. Those are examples of some of the projects. We also have the senior tech community that we talk about, the seniors come, and we're having to use the computers of an outside organization. So community development has a very big project, United Way, called Youth Build, where we are providing some technical career training. We are doing the medical building assistance. We are providing drivers and learners for that. We are also doing job training, food handlers, management course, certification, and CERT for Youth Build. Those participants will receive a stipend. Our goal is to provide employment services for them. Community development will be marching the micro enterprise program. It's been a long call for the micro enterprise, it was brought up past years ago. We're providing small businesses, first foremost minority owned, small businesses or small businesses already existing in the city of Long Beach that will need aid. It could be paying a utility bill, it could be a business plan, it could be technical assistance, textbooks. We are partnering with other organizations and facilitators to assist our businesses based on what they say they need are. The goal is to establish relationships with businesses out here in the city, and, am I talking to that?
No, you're actually doing your report.
Oh.
And you're going to say?
Oh, that's right, sorry. So I'm going to finish. I'll come back in part two. I don't know where to stop. Is that all right? Oh, you want me to keep going? There's always more, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, just finish the hearing and then we'll come back.
Perfect, sorry. I was ready.
Don't throw me the car.
Thank you, Monique. To this point right here, is the CDVG program is a very complex, convoluted process, which involves several layers of government. Therefore, it comes as no surprise to me that we need to do this in two parts. My first comment is that, again, it's complex and convoluted, but I want to thank city manager Gaden, Monique, and Controller Resnick for working through the layers and layers upon layers of managing this program over many years. So my question at the root of this is that we're discussing the 48th year. However, there, which some people may not be aware, is that there are still the funds right now going back to the 43rd year. So I was looking for some, you know, some commentary on where we are and where we're going to be in the near future.
Oh, so yes, there are funds from actually the 43rd, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th year. Oh, Monique and I met with Kevin, um, from, we worked for CDVG. We also. I'm sorry?
Of Nass.
Of Nassau County, uh, that's where we get the funds from. We also met with legislator Ford, discussed why the city in the past year's funding, at least we went back to 2017, had not been spending money. Both Monique and I cannot explain why back in 2017 and beyond, or just because she's been here just less than, uh, approximately two years. And what the director told us is that she's been the longest employee in the CDVG department. So there was a turnover there, um, and that could be why Monique has not been spent. But what we agreed to is in the, the later year, the earlier year, 2017, 125,000 was spent. And, uh, all claims will be in by June 3rd of, uh, this year. And that we are, one of the items on the agenda, uh, which is the air conditioner at MLK. CDVG said that because of monies that have not been spent, we can use those monies to get reimbursed. So what will happen is, the vote will come up that the monies will be taken from the capital project. We will send the invoices to CDVG and then they will replace, they will give us the money from CDVG to, um, to pay for their air conditioner. We also went through things that happened in the past. The city in the past has given money to nonprofit organizations with no accountability. And we get all our money on a reimbursable basis. So we're working with the county that any nonprofit organization that we give money to has to be able, it will be done on a reimbursable basis, and they have to fall in within the guidelines of CDVG. There has been a couple of organizations that the city has given money to, and then CDVG deemed that they did not follow what they, uh, they applied for. So the city will just owe that money. Uh, CDVG will not reimburse us. And everybody knows that we, the city, is not in any position not to be reimbursed for any monies that we can get. So the short of it is that all monies that, um, have not been spent, the staff is working diligently to spend money and spend it in the CDVG areas where it's needed.
Thank you, City Manager Gaden. I think, you know, a key takeaway here is that we have a program that's been in existence for a long time. But at the end of the day, um, the city may not have been administering the program properly according to the guidelines of the program. So that may be not, that may be used to some organizations. Unfortunately, that is the case, um, but thanks to the administration, they're writing a shift and we're compliant and managing things properly. Does the council have any questions? Mr. Lester?
Yeah, a couple of questions, the, and I guess Donald, I guess you have the appropriate person. The average of this is about 275,000, 25,000 a year?
Yes, it is about 275. Um, we are trying to spend all the money so we can get more, but we have to show that we will spend the money at a timely manner of what we get.
And, but you're, you know, you moved into that direction.
Yes.
And, and we used to get 900,000.
Yes.
How can we, outside of spending the money, is there anything else we can do to try to get back to that kind of number?
Uh, we're building relationships.
So it's mostly accounting?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a county in blood thing, but we have to show the track record that we're going to take care of business and what we send in to get reimbursed for are the duty employers.
Okay, and finally, Monique, on the education courses, where are they being held right now? I mean, you're talking some pretty good courses. Where do you vote?
I think that's the age, um. I think that was largely accepted by the chief of the city.
So we have, we have a, I have the agenda.
We have a hearing, there are two houses we have to manage.
And you want to let her finish?
Why would I call the hearing?
Um, any, any more questions from the council, or Mr. Benda?
Yeah, um. She's still right here. Oh, okay. Um. From the time we, we, that we vote to approve, how long is typically between them and the city getting the funds? What's, what's the typical time?
Uh, it depends on allocation, it's about six months.
Six months, okay. And then what's the contract from Z? What is the period of time to spend the money? How long's a contract last?
Each contract's about three years. Uh, once we get the approval of the contract for funds, we can actually spend, spend the monies or the funds. We just can't claim it for reimbursement until the contract is actually in hand.
Okay, but they don't have to spend within a calendar year or anything like that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions from the public for this hearing? Mr. Hodge?
Am I going to this microphone? Not that I necessarily need one, but I'll use it.
Say your name and address, thank you. Your name, city?
95 East Cold Street, I'm happy to almost be back after 10 years, so I won't stop. State my address, my name is James Todd, right here in this beautiful city, by the sea. I just happen to live by the bay. Uh, I am, I want to thank God for the opportunity of learning so much about community development funds through the first African-American, uh, director of community development funds who's sitting here tonight. One of the early, early times, also of the Martin Luther King Center, Ms. Jean Ziegler, one of the first African-American business owners in the city of Long Beach. So I thank God, I still have the courage from all of those years ago, and she worked for the city for over 20 some odd years. You know, uh, thank you for honoring all of the women. I honor my mother every day and she is in heaven. Community development funds has always, has certainly been, again, for low to moderate income. It has a system on how it works, how it's funded, how it's reimbursed. Uh, I don't speak unless I'm given permission by the MLK to speak on MLK. But when I was the chairperson, I just want to say, and also Ms. Dole was the chairperson for many years, Ms. Ziegler was on it. When the MLK was one of those organizations that received funds from community development, it was always based on a system, like 5,000 dollars, and you had to give in all of the receipts because it was, again, on a reimbursement system. I say that that money was so useful for John White and Project Challenge, who was a great mentor to me also, and, uh, Circolo, Martino Civic. Those 5,000 dollars do so much for, for organizations that meet the needs of whoever, whatever the organization is and you're following for, and you have to get selected, it was so beneficial. You know, of course, it was, I think, at a million dollars, like you said, almost a million, and it just trickled down because I guess we hadn't been using it. But I know throughout the years, community development has been very beneficial to the North Park community with different projects, and especially the Martin Luther King. So as you're looking to what you're going to utilize it for, I say continue looking for those organizations that could utilize it too, uh, and that could benefit off of helping a lot of the individuals, whether it's seniors. And I know the city's trying to do what they can, but there's a lot of people, like Monique said, she's new to it, a lot of people are learning. There's a lot of people that's here, that's been there, and done it, that can actually come to the table and just help. Because we all here to help one another, to make our city one of the best and second to none. So, again, I say, please continue looking at how those funds can be beneficial to a lot of, uh, a lot of organizations that it was going to, especially the Martin Luther Kings, because it sponsored a lot of great programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, I just wanted to clarify, um, at the end, you said it was beneficial to the MLK Center?
To all the organizations that it was going to.
Yes, it's, it's actually the MLK Center, Inc., which is a nonprofit app that currently uses the MLK Center building.
You don't think I know that name, the chairperson that voted for you?
Yes.
I know, but Long Beach Martin Luther King Center, Inc., Long Beach Martin Luther King. Okay, thank you for the ink party, I appreciate it.
Just trying, just trying to work for the public here.
I got it, the ink party.
Okay, thank you, I think I missed the city manager's report, my apology.
So, Monique, do you want to come back and finish?
Wait, did I close the hearing?
Yeah, you have a lot.
Uh, is there any more public comments? Y-yes. Ms. Lee?
Good evening, everyone. Hope for well.
Good night. More folks love it?
Good evening, everyone, I hope everyone is well.
Yes.
Um, I agree with everything that everyone has said thus far. Um, approximately, it was the capital improvement plan, 2010, 2011. I located two lines of funding. Item 41001, Sherman Brown Park. Item 41003, Leeward Congress Park. There was approximately, give or take a million dollars. One of the projects, uh, there was an indication that it wasn't completed with a wire. Approximately 2012-ish, the project actually began. Mr. Perizzi Ellis met with members of the community. Um, he was extremely instrumental with Sherman Brown Park, which, prior to the renovations and the upgrades, it looked like a jailhouse rock, concrete to basketball courts. Now, for the younger children, there has been upgrades, which the children definitely need. Um, moving forward, I think it would also be important, as a recreational and health component, that additional funding be put into the cause. Um, Sherman Brown Park was a candidate to move that time, you know, to create movement, to create help, uh, for teenagers, seniors, whoever wanted to be part of the table participating. So I think in this climate of betterment of your health, um, moving, getting out into the fresh air, maybe even a movie night for the younger children over the course of the summer. So there was a lot of other components, um, and equipment that was supposed to be added to Sherman Brown Park that never occurred, unfortunately. So I would just like to put that on the table, thank you for your time, be well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? At this time, I'm going to close the hearing.
Okay, Monique, under the manager's report, um, Monique can complete her report.
Great, I'll complete my report, also, I think it's all about CDVG. I've seen some of the same topics that were just addressed, they're a public question, and I can also include and have that included for the time. Um, so just to reset my notes, we were talking about examples of the activities. And so the classes and the area where these programs and services will be offered is in the Magnolia Building on the second floor. Thanks to CDVG, the middle room has been outfitted as a classroom with mobile furniture, equipment, and cubicles for any type of learning, exhibits, uh, technical assistance is open for any of the city residents, uh, for us to have the programs there. Currently, the Adult Learning Center is providing literacy courses there, um, as well as our Youth Bill courses will be there. We also open up that classroom to any of our community-based organizations or nonprofits, when we know that space is limited. So that is on the second floor and it's completely ready to be used now. It has supplies, COVID supplies, any of the supplies that's available there, that's on the second floor. In addition to that second floor, we have something called the Resource Hub. It's where we have staff members from that department that sit there in the office, available by phone or walking to any city resident that needs some type of assistance or information. So you can walk in here on the second floor. We have information, handouts, resources, we care to the community, and we're working on our primary project of a community map, where we can identify all the resources for city residents with anything they need. That includes any of our community-based organizations or nonprofits. The goal of the city is not to redo what's already been done for the ci, for the city residents, but to include every resource, every information, and provide that there at the city. For example, if we need food, clothing, if we have the information, uh, we provide it to the city. That's open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. I have my phone, there are staff members at home, and there's a staff member that sits in there to take the information. Um, we've done plenty of activities, uh, there thus far with that, and that's on the second floor. It's called a resource, uh, we should ship, receive information. Going back to CDVG, this year, application is definitely, uh, differently upgraded. Uh, previously, it wasn't transparent. Uh, the capacity of the nonprofits or any organizations that we were externally giving CDVG funds to didn't have an idea that was reimbursable, didn't understand the requirements. Um, we were not transparent of the expectations. It wasn't clear of the benefits, as James Todd mentioned. That CDVG funds, 51% is for low moderate income. That is not an amount that's determined by the city. That amount is determined by the United States Census information. I repeat again, I was a Long Beach Census representative, so I wanted to know what those numbers look like. And according to Census, there was about 6% of population that is considered low moderate of the entire city of Long Beach. The average income is 92,000. So a CDVG is to service those that are 51%. Now, there's two ways you can benefit from a CDVG fund. That is income, like I just stated, or area benefit. So there is a map which shows certain areas in the city of Long Beach that can receive all benefits of the CDVG fund. So what we've done this go-around is that we have procured an application software called Submittable. With Submittable, after tonight's public hearing of the application, any nonprofit, any community-based organization, any house of worship that meet the minimum requirements can apply to the city of Long Beach on our website to Submittable, which is our online application system. On that application system, we have identified three main goals, uh, for community development moving forward that any organization could apply for. Only qualification that you are non-profit, file a 501(c)(3). When you apply, there's a checklist that we're using to vet the organization. Meaning you have to have your 501(c) documentation, your IRIS statement, your articles of the corporation, stating that you are a nonprofit or CBO, your Char 900, um, I mean, sorry, your 900, which is your IRS statement, um, your board of directors. So this is the information that we're receiving ahead of time to make sure that the organizations that we are collaborating with and providing CDVG funds are vetted, meet the qualifications. What this application does is, is provides communication to those who are applying, whether they meet the requirements, their project is being funded, the application is visible for all because it's saved in the cloud versus submitting via email. Being that I am the longest community development, um, coordinator, director, I haven't found in previous applications that that could be issued. So whether I'm here or anyone wants to view it, if we have a referral request on these applications, it is visible. As applicants apply, they can see where they are in the process, they get immediate feedback, and then it's stored. Uh, the great news about this is that the Nassau County Community Development is moving the same way and their application is now on the application software. So we are going along with what federal, uh, and local, um, community development is doing. So our goal this year is to focus on economic development of our city residents, in particular, those who are under the average income. That's where we give the projects such as micro enterprise, the Adult Learning Center, the Youth Bill. We want to make our city residents employable. The next one is public facilities improvement, in that, Ms. Lee, I believe, uh, we have already applied for Sherman Brown Park to be upgraded. We are fixing Leeward Congress Park, there was some upgrades enhancement, it wasn't as recold. Um, and I take full responsibility of that, um, and that is going to be part of the upgrade. Well, that is just part of us working together as a city, um, under the guidance of city manager, uh, Donna Gan, uh, sorry, Donna. Um, she has advised that CDVG be more of a project manager than that. We are, in this department, we understand the federal guidelines and city employees and departments and department heads need that, uh, so the goal is to communicate that. So public facilities is part of the improvement, we've done a tremendous amount of the recreational center, we are moving away from that, and we're moving towards the park. Leeward Congress was born in 2017, and we're finishing those enhancements, as well as Sherman Brown, as some of the community members have mentioned. The next focus is public services. The city has now decided to provide. The city has now decided to provide public services, which are the youth, adults, and seniors. But that does not mean that we are not going to provide funds to those community-based organizations that do apply. So that should answer James Hodge's question that we are encouraging nonprofits or CDOs to apply through that application. You will benefit from it. The additional is part of a transfer of funds. As past, we have identified that the guys in administration, what needs to be done. We must keep in mind that under community development, we are probably the Nassau County Consortium Community Development. We are giving strict eligible activities, budgeting, and guidelines in order to implement our projects. And there has been a few cases where activities are deemed ineligible. The city pays for it and not reimbursable by the county. In addition to that, yes, we receive $900,000 and we will only receive $270,000 for the fourth year. Our goal is with the change that we will get more funds. We have built relationships, had numerous meetings with Nassau County Community Development in our building at Magnolia. I believe that I covered, we, we, yeah. So when we're doing projects, we have identified some phases. The first phase is the planning phase, where we align with our internal processes. Our departments have identified the need. We meet on it, whether it's in towards the community or internally what we want to get done. We start the procurement process, which can be easily, but yet very compliant. And then the implementing project. And to, Mr. Bendo, that is actually what takes, could take about two to three years to do so.
Okay, thank you, Monique. I think she's answered her questions extensively.
I have a couple more questions. That, you know, I know you said that part of it goes towards services to the community and other parts go to fixing up the community facilities. Do you know what ratio it is, or is it changing every year?
Well, no matter what budget we get, let's say we get $500,000.
Sorry, what?
I said, the community development Nassau County determines our allocation. We only are able to spend 20% on public services. And the other eighty has to be on public facilities. They call it public facilities improvement. So they determine that. So we only get $275,000. Only 20% of that can go to the public funding and programming. And the other eighty can only be done on public facilities and buildings.
Do you know what the basis for that is? I mean, it seems like the public service would be a lot more.
Oh, trust me, I'm entitled to that. The only way we can increase that is by getting more funds. But it's a federal guideline, we have a cap on public services. I feel that is also that the public facilities is something that has a longer duration, depreciation as well, things don't walk away. You start talking about public services, salaries. There's more documentation and reporting that you need to have, prevailing wages, Section 3, so those are some of the things that I found from what we have provided.
Thank you.
So I mean, CDVG actually goes back to the 1980s and President Reagan, who actually started the program. It goes through HUD and then goes down to the county. So that's why I'm saying there's multi-layers of what we're doing here. I just want to commend you on really establishing clear needs and objectives for the program and also identifying a process. So now, it's not the way things used to, it's the way you always, the way you've always done it isn't the way we're doing it now. So I'm eager and hopeful that organizations and facilities adapt to the changes because it's for the better. Thank you.
I have it. Monique?
Hi.
Thank you for the presentation. So is my understanding, Submittable, that is a new application online process that we're using?
Yes, we actually procured a use of CDVG funds. And it is, yes, it's renewable every year. So we're now logging into a contract. I know we still listen back to our contract, but it's like. But yes, we actually, they apply online. And it's just like a, something similar, it's just an application process. It makes it easier. Previously, community-based organizations just send an email to the director of community development. I didn't trust the liability validity of that, nor was it transparent to whoever was applying, like the requirements, their process. Also, it's visible to anybody in the administration that want to log in. We provide a login. We only purchase to be used. I have a W user that actually see the progress. It's stored and is immediately viewed. So yes.
Okay, and then, thank you. The process itself, like you were saying today, I have heard. So what is the process that you all, I guess, communicate out to the nonprofits and other folks who are going to be using Submittable to make them aware, you know, of the things that you can be doing, programs and the other?
Good question. I did talk about that. Prior to the application opening, we met with five W meetings with the nonprofits in the area, Clarity. We did capacity building, we met to talk about community issues. The last meeting that opened up in February, we discussed the Submittable and how to apply. At the same time, with conflict of interest as being the administrator of the fund, we stopped the meeting prior to that. I communicated them the process of Submittable and they will receive an email with instructions after tonight's meeting. So tonight's meeting is actually a process of applying. Tonight's meeting is actually a process that is required by our Nassau County Community Development, where we provide a public hearing informing the community that we are applying for the 40th year. What we're doing as a city is we're applying what we feel are the needs of the community, based on surveys, based on conversation, community-based organizations and our members. And we're applying on public facilities, as I mentioned, and the public services that I mentioned. The nonprofits will then take a portion of what we apply for as a city. We're contracting out versus giving them the funds as a hurdle. And that way, we can monitor and we can make sure that the requirements are being met and we are fully paying for it and contracting on to do this. That is a complete difference. Prior to that, we would just get the funds and get a good direction of what needs to be done. But in order to maintain document reporting and reimbursing all the funds that the city is on library, we are going to be the administrator of. So for example, it's going to say senior services. We don't provide hot meals. So one of the applicants can apply to provide hot meals to seniors. We will then provide whatever is in the budget as far as with the school preparation. We will monitor it, we will collect time sheets. And that way, we own the documenting and reporting. And that will assist with the turnaround and the processing to get our money back. And that came about because some organizations didn't have the documentation, didn't have the reporting, didn't have a procurement process, didn't understand it, don't have the staffing. We understand the constraints and the capacity of our nonprofit. And that was some of the change of nature, retention for them as well. So these were some of the bottlenecks that we found of why the process was so, we just eliminated it.
All right, thank you.
I just have one final question about Submittable. As you know, each year, a 501(c)(3), which is a IRS tax status of a nonprofit organization, they're required to file their New York State Chaver 500 and their IRS Form 990, which is essentially their tax return. So does the city, within this system, does the city have recourse to be able to reject an application if a nonprofit is delinquent in their state or federal priorities?
Yes, part of the Char. 500 is the School of Charity Bureau is responsible with our profit to follow those guidelines. It can be stepped upon by laws, by laws, conflict of interest, lobbying, because it's supposed to be by a person. On our Submittable, those are required before you can even submit your project. So there's steps to doing that is required. They will not be able to bypass that process unless they have all of the documentation is needed as the state is called a prequalification status. It's similar to New York State Gateways, procurement and prequalification status. So we're keeping the same. Prior by nonprofit meetings, some of those documentations came up as we were assisting our organizations in their capacity building and finding resources to get into where they were. So it's like a backup design to where we don't have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. I don't want to school the bridge, pardon me, March 1st, 2022.
And then, Dave, would we vote on an amendment first and then we'll get the minutes?
Does W use in the prison, go on the amendment? Yeah. Yeah.
But we can allow an amendment this party.
Let's, let's do.
On page six. It's, I don't know if you correct it or not. Given on the, the clipage, we've been states that we all voted in the affirmative.
So one of the resolutions that we voted on at the last meeting was for function gear. I think the minutes stated that it was a unanimous vote, a five votes in the affirmative, when actually one member dissented. So that will be, that will be a correction to the minutes.
I believe it says.
Okay, scratch that and then. So we can proceed with the, with the vote.
The motion.
I, I would.
Sorry?
As well.
Vote against the motion.
Yes.
That's our last. That's our amendment.
Yes.
President Charleston.
Yes.
President Gins.
Yes.
And two, three, we voted. And three, it's a resolution authorizing five of an application in the county's assets of the purpose of undertaking a community development program entitled the House of Community Development Act of 1974, as we have been entitled to the National Board of Land Act. 1990 is amended for inclusion of citizens in the development program. These 2022, 2023, here is the hell of a signing, all right? I endorse the resolution authorizing transfer funds from 2021 to 2022 for speed.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Fabricio, Commissioner of Public Works. This is a resolution authorizing routine transfer funds in the amount of $41,600. It's from the sanitation department, equipment lease line, to the sanitation department vehicles who are in the airway. The funding will be utilized to repair three vehicles in the sanitation department. One's a 2014 rack truck. The other's a 2003 pickup truck. And the third is a 2014 garbage truck. This is funding that's left over approaching three trucks about a month ago. This is funding that's left in the winds. I have Devin Paul here, Superintendent Sanitation. If there's any questions, and of course, I'm here to answer questions as well.
Any questions for the council?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This was on the move of the funds for the repairs. Oh, excuse me, I did not hear you. This was on moving of the funds for the repairs.
That's correct.
It seems, you know, all of a sudden, we, you know, these vehicles haven't been repaired for years. And now we need to repair them. I certainly understand because they are important. But how do we stop that from happening in the future? I mean, now you're going to have a line for vehicle repairs, but that line is basically extended now.
Yeah, that's correct. There's a vehicle repair line, 54499, in the central garage. And there's also a vehicle repair line in sanitation. The vehicle repair line in the central garage is just about exhausting. And that's why we're actually doing this transfer of repair to three specific vehicles. There will be a separate discussion regarding the central garage, a line. I've got another meeting, I'm sure. But this one is really just to address these three vehicles. The 2014 rack truck actually needs an engine. So what's going to happen is we purchase that engine and our staff will come to it solid. The 2008 pickup truck was actually sent down, was in a 1996. And that's actually been repaired, a body damage has been repaired at a body shop. And the 2014 garbage truck, it's really just a purchased, bought and seen vehicle on the ticket program.
Okay, so it's, the way that the resolution is worried is to repair garbage trucks. A rack truck can pick up trucks, but it's only.
It's really, is I correct, that, these three trucks?
It's also unforeseen. There is a truck that's disappeared as well.
Oh, so it's actually, if there's any additional money left after we repair the three trucks and we utilize them to repair some of them.
How much, how much do the repairs, how much of this going with that and it's coming into repairs and how much of you are done?
I don't have that information, unfortunately.
The engine for the 2014 rack truck is $6,900. The, the garbage truck, we didn't get an estimate. It has to be sent out to the vendor. It's been sitting for a while. So it's going to take a lot of repairs. The pickup truck is at Arnie's collision. That one is $6,000. And we need tires for vehicles. It's, the money is also for numerous parts that are needed coming into spring and summer, which is our heaviest time of the year. We don't want any setbacks. So that's why we're transferring the funds now so that those funds are available if anything unforeseen happens, like a truck needs to go to another vendor. We don't want to run into any issues with the trucks which is sitting and we're delaying the services being provided, so.
No, I understand. And I guess part of what I'm asking is because these trucks have been sitting for a while. And, you know, we have the money now. And it seems, it's not going to be a consistent theme that, you know, we can't repair things and things sit for a while.
No, it didn't, no. So what has happened on that, what has happened in the past is prior to this, you, there were vehicles, trucks that needed to be repaired. It wasn't that they could, they just didn't. They just didn't repair. And so now we have additional people, more people that are in the garage. And what we're saying is that we have to take care of the fleet that we have. And so the person that did the budget originally is no longer here. And the budget was done based on things they've done in the past. When the new staff came in to run the garage, they noticed that a lot of vehicles were not fixed and they could be fixed. And so there wasn't enough money to, there wasn't enough budget to fix the vehicles. So we were constantly running out of money. And so in this particular, in the sanitation department, if during the summer, we run out of money and they have to, we have to come back to do a transfer, then that's time. And so what they're doing in the second paragraph is set for numerous repairs and restoration. So he's trying to cover his bases that let me fix these items, but if something comes up, I have the money because that $41,000 of the country is not going to be used in that budget. And in the future, the budgets would have asked for is that each department have a vehicle repair line. Because when we're finding out whatever the budget, the majority of the money goes to two separate departments. And so we need to track the vehicles by car.
But they would have a separate budget, but they would not be charging down as repairs? And they could still go to the garage?
Yes, but it's the budget planning. So we can track the cars that are being fixed. They can track what's being fixed. And each department is responsible for their budget. But that's not in their budget, so now they will be.
So we won't see something like this, right, hopefully?
Not after this year, hopefully.
What is interesting is that the public may not know is that the council goes through, and the city management team goes through a rigorous questioning process that extends about a week and a half where the council asks the management questions. Turns out, we, the city already responded to this question in the sense that we were already communicated to last week that the budget for repairs is in the central garage. So that's why some transfers would be necessary. Any other questions from the council?
Just one amendment. Well, I think you just answered my question. So going forward, the sanitation vehicle repair line is basically the blank.
Yes.
So now local bills, you'll have a budget for your vehicle repairs, starting with this transfer and then going forward. So we can, then I have, because I'm going to guess, my follow-up question, I'm going to guess nobody knows the answer to, is the $700,000 that's in the overall vehicle repair budget for the garage? Probably nobody knows what percentage goes to sanitation, the police, the fire.
Yeah, that's something that the control and I are working with to get that breakdown from where the $700,000 is spent. How much is going to fly, the bomb, how much is on the police, the bomb, how much is on the?
A vote in this year's upcoming budget, probably going to want to break all that up so we can track.
It's already done.
Typically, at this time of the year, this is when these types of, these things occur. And another issue we're going to have is the fuel. Because the fuel line is exhausted later. So, you know, on task, we're working with the departments and the controller So, you know, on task, we're working with the departments and the controller to try and find money on budget lines that we can transfer to cover the fuel costs. As everyone knows, the fuel is probably four or five dollars down right now. Um, we actually spent a lot of fuel last year, beginning of the year, and we had the, uh, Fort Boy C who hooked up with his ability to burn about seven hundred dollars a day, so we gave up a lot of the budget. So you're gonna see, we're working, and I'll just give you, you know, one example of how we're looking to plug the budget into vehicle repair line, and also the fuel line. You know, I've been talking to, uh, the controller, we're looking at, for example, the rust rupture rule line is probably under budget by maybe two hundred thousand dollars, based on first review. So we may see a future council meeting, a request transfer one from the A line, rust rupture sanitation, to a B line in the central garage for fuel and vehicle repairs. So it's counterpracticed at this time of the year, there's a budget, it's an estimate, and nobody would really foresee that we'd pay it, or, or else, I don't think.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this item? Okay.
Item five is a resolution authorizing transfer funds for the twenty-one, twenty-two, fifty.
Uh, this is, item five, this is a resolution authorizing the city to do another routine transfer in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. This is from sanitation waste and rupture rule to conservation and recycling contract services. This is the budget line of funds, the stop program that we participate in. Um, this funding, uh, for the past five years, they've only budgeted ten thousand dollars for the evidence program, I checked the last five years, and every year, essentially costs is about twenty-five, that's an ounce a year. So we've been continuously having a budget, pretty much covered budgeting for this, um, stop program, so next year we will, we will change that, we will change that. Um, just so you know how the stop program works, it's approximately, this is the agreement we have with the town, I said, there's ten events per year. Um, the suitcase pays the seven, the seventh of course based on population, okay? So in other words, if the town has the cost of forty thousand dollars for a event, we would pay seven percent of that for twenty-five dollars per program. So we multiply twenty-five hundred times ten programs, it costs us twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. So we're really long in the, participate in ten programs, they have one launch, and it costs us roughly three thousand per program, but ten thousand just isn't enough, you know, for an operating cost, for the funds program. So that's why we're suggesting this transfer.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Lester?
Um, so, it can't give them programs, but there, there's only one in Long Beach?
That was the agreement, that they have to hold one of the ten in the launch that you're willing to afford to my yard.
But we paid for all of them. We paid seven percent of all, all of them.
Correct.
And that extends everywhere in Town and Hempstead, or is it Nassau County, or?
We do, anywhere, any of the, any of the, where they host the ten programs, all launch residents are allowed to participate.
They're Town and Hempstead.
Correct, yes. It's Town and Hempstead program.
Yeah, Town and Hempstead.
That's what we're bringing with.
Do they hold them, since Long Beach isn't in Town and Hempstead, they hold them outside of the Town and Hempstead, do they hold them in the Montier, in Long Hempstead, and stuff like that?
No, just the Town and Hempstead. Is that every question? The Town and Hempstead program?
I, I know it's a Town and Hempstead program, I'm asking the geographic areas that they hold them in. You say it's only in Town and Hempstead areas?
They have them in, well, they, they have them in Central Gap.
Yes.
They have them on the west side.
I assume any exception, because we're in the geographical middle of their town.
I mean, what I can do is just, I can get you the list, hopefully, without, without answering your question, I can get you a list of the time locations.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get rid of that, you know, why, Long Beach?
We don't, we don't choose, we don't choose the sites, that's Town and Hempstead, they did, but they all acquired that one, yeah, we do. Absolutely, and we, and we always do.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I just have one, um, uh, Joe, do we document the impacts of our participation in this program? Just interested to know.
Um, yes, indeed, I don't have that with me, but what happens is, is, say, there's twelve hundred programs that participate, they will actually report how many are from Long Beach and how many are from out of town, and they will also, um, by percentage, let's say, how many, how many, uh, batteries were collected, how many, uh, all the different, how many, how much payments, they will give you a breakdown of how much is attributed to Long, uh, Long Beach residents, so yes.
Mr. Bennet, since we're, um, contributing to all the programs, not just the ones in Long Beach, for the programs that take place outside of Long Beach and so Town and Hempstead, do we advertise those?
Um, I think it's advertised on the website, that's pretty much it.
On the city's website, or the Town and Hempstead?
No, I believe it's on the city's website, I do, that John can usually, uh, uh, uh...
The city has a, have a link on, on the sanitation page, there's a link to the Town and Hempstead stop program page, which I have over right now, and I have a list of all the different locations, if you want to read off the location.
To, to your point, though, that was news to me, so we will start.
Yeah, we, we have to start, because we're paying for it, and people need it, you know, especially if it's in point lookout, you know, people can certainly go back, you know? So it would probably be good to start with people.
Yeah, but we used to, you know, in the past, we used to send out a specific flyer, we didn't wanna start doing it again.
Well, there is one, but it's specific to the Long Beach.
No, Joe's point was that it did include other locations in the past.
Correct, in the past, we, I don't think we've done it.
In a while.
It makes sense, I mean, it's, it's lots of sense.
Dave, since we're paying for it, it probably makes sense to let people know.
Dave, do you wanna read out the location, even though, so we can save paper?
Yeah, here, here are the locations that they have listed for, for the, you know, stop program, uh, East Meadow, Long Beach, South Delmore, uh, Bay Park, East Driveaway, Levittown, uh, Hempstead, Valley Stream, Northwoodmere, Baldwin, and then again, there's the other.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public on, uh, this item? Okay.
And once again, we're a resolution authorizing transfer funds for the twenty-one, twenty-two, fifty.
Good evening, Commissioner Miller.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the Fire Department is in need of immediate essential repair work onto our primary ALS ambulance that services the city's residents. This vehicle is a two thousand eighteen vehicle custom ambulance that is used as a primary transport for thousands of emergencies and alarms each year. The constant running improves this vehicle on a twenty-four hour basis, so over the past few years, has equivalency of the vehicle being used for over three hundred thousand miles. Due to this, the engine is in need to be replaced. Uh, the vehicle's been out of service for now over seven weeks, and putting a strain on current operations. The vehicle had gone out for engine issues, and after a time, it was determined the vehicle was in need of a new engine. The funds to initiate repair work are currently available in the Fire Department budget line. Uh, we're pushing that we establish a new budget line for Fire Department vehicle repairs, and transfer money from our one line, uh, over this new vehicle repair. We need about a twenty thousand dollar transit over from, uh, the equipment lease line, where we have some additional funds right now, and that should cover it for this, uh, repair. Any questions?
So I need to recall from the questions that we've had the past week, is that the equipment leases line is down because of time we have ordered, that we can't get some equipment. Is that correct?
The, uh, the vehicle lease line, it was currently for an ambulance, which we're behind on, uh, presenting to the council, so that money that was put in there, but this budget here is now currently available to be used in the repair engine on these ambulances.
To keep this current ambulance going, because we haven't ordered the new one?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the council, Mr. Bennet?
The, the twenty thousand that we're looking to transfer, obviously establishing a new budget line, you were saying, so I assume then you'll have, also have a vehicle repair line going forward now for Fire Department?
Yes.
Uh, but, the, the twenty thousand, is that just gonna come to the, this one engine replacement, or will that be able to cover some other things you need to do too?
No, as of right now, the replacement costs is nineteen thousand, which just strictly for this.
Uh, okay, so, so based on what you were talking about, the way that the ambulance is used, that it's equivalent of three hundred thousand miles, should we anticipate that we're probably gonna have to replace an engine in our ambulances every three or four years?
The engines, no, the ambulances, yes, that, that's what we've been doing in the past, about every three years, we've been replacing the ambulances and then moving them back, getting rid of the oldest one with the worst condition, and going forward for each one. Uh, for the engines, depending on the wear and tear of the engines, they could last up to twenty years, so for, if you're talking about pumpers engines.
No, no, I'm talking about, in this case, the ambulance.
Oh, so that's...
Because you're saying it's the equivalent of three hundred thousand miles for over three years, the way the ambulance is used, so, I mean, are we basically gonna burn out an engine every three or four years in our ambulances?
Unfortunately, every car is different, every engine's gonna be different, so it might happen, uh, with the new ambulances that we're speculating out right now, we're looking to change, uh, to afford to a Dodge engine, which hopefully will prolong the life of it, um, going by the mechanic's suggestions in the garage, and what we've seen out there.
So I, I guess what we're seeing right now is the chassis and non-engine components seem to have been lasting longer than the engines.
For this ambulance, yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Lester?
Yes, Joe, I'm sorry, how long did you say it's been sitting there and need a repair?
About seven weeks now.
Seven. Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else?
Hey, uh, questions from the public? Mr. Deloree?
Good evening, members of the council, I'm Deloree, Long Beach. A couple of questions I have, if, uh, if you're someone who can answer them. I don't understand what the equivalent vehicle miles are, if that could be somehow acquainted to the actual odometer that's on the vehicle currently. If you move ahead with the new engine, is it a brand new engine? Is there a warranty on the engine? A twenty eighteen vehicle, I'm not an ambulance driver, I, I just seem to think that a twenty eighteen should last a lot longer, um, that's, and it's the proposed replacement of the engine, is it a new engine? And if so, warranty, if it's a rebuilt engine, what kind of warranty do you get? And is there an additional fee for an extended warranty? Thank you.
The equivalency you're speaking about is having the ambulance running twenty-four seven, so if the ambulance is on and is constantly in motion doing transports and not sitting still, the equivalency is if for the last three years, having about three hundred thousand miles on it, the engine itself, not actually the vehicle miles, so not three hundred thousand, but the wear and tear on the engine is equivalent of three hundred thousand miles. Yes. Uh, in regards to replacing, is gonna be a new engine and warranty of the three years?
So bas, basically, these ambulances are averaging a hundred thousand miles a year due to idling and actual transportation?
If they're tracking running the twenty-four seven, yeah, it's about that, and it's not, again, not exact number, but it's an estimate of how much it's wear and tear on the ambulances.
Mr. Lester?
Yeah, Mike, I just wanted to answer that question, it's considered, an hour of idling is considered between thirty and sixty miles annual.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Uh, Mr., Commissioner Miller, um, Mr. Deloree asks, is it a new engine or a rebuilt? Is there a warranty? Answer?
Yes, new and three-year warranty.
Is there additional fee for an extended warranty?
No, it comes with the, uh, buying a new engine.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, is that three years regardless of miles and hours and stuff?
Correct.
Are there any other questions from the public? Mr. Pinto?
Good evening, everyone, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. Um, I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the commissioner that if it's an important budget, a transfer get done, um, reliability and the availability of our ambulance is very important, and I think it's, uh, during the short term, if we can't get this new ambulance here, this transfer is also a very good idea to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Other questions?
And in seconds, a resolution authorizing city manager change agreement, add mitigation work in the form of warranty, the case of the most responsible here. Just to note, there are, this item, I don't know, the, 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 to these items, uh, they have been posted on the website, there's also, uh, posted on the site by the, uh, the judges on, uh, do you have the motion at this time?
I'll make the motion, though, okay?
To, to replace the, uh, to replace the, uh, item with the new, uh...
Uh, so going to, in the last, to resolve, in the resolve in the chapter, uh, the funds sentence, less sentence, to be replaced with funds in the amount of five thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty-six are available in account number H one zero one eight dot five two three five two, mitigation project and funds in the amount of one million one hundred forty-four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents are available on account number one zero one nine dot five two three five two, mitigation project, of which one hundred percent would be reimbursed to the city to be, wait, I might have a modification to the modification, that second account number, that should have the H.
It does, on the latest copy, that, on the latest copy that came out right before the meeting, there it's there.
Copy, I'll hand it to her.
Okay. I'm going, I want to email her over there.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Deloree, that's my question.
Yes.
That's my question, Lester.
Yes.
That's my better.
Yes.
That's President Charleston.
Yes.
President McGinnis.
Yes. Commissioner Fabrizio.
That's what we're doing, okay. Uh, I know there's a lot of questions on seven, eight, nine, ten, all lines, so I'm trying to play, I'm here for the rest of the night, okay? But I do have some, look for the lengthy summary of response, um, I don't know if I answered any questions, uh, at the end of this, I'll get a speech. Okay, I understand it as a resolution authorizing city manager to, 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 to your building and renovations for a payment of one million, one hundred fifty thousand to undertake construction to implement hazard mitigation measures to protect the MLK, MLK Center from flooding. Um, the work's gonna consist of repairing the corrugated steel around the perimeter of the building, installation of a fiber reinforced polymer wrap on the corrugated steel to mitigate against potential flooding. They're gonna be injecting rubber to exterior masonry in front of the building to drive floodproofing in the exterior space, because it needs long sun pumps to do it. They're gonna be replacing the doors with floodproof units. There were two bids received for the project on March ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Premier built building was the low bidder, at one million one fifty, and structural presentation systems was the second bidder, at one million two ninety-six, nine forty. Uh, just for your information, the reason we didn't award the project sooner was because FEMA initially only awarded three million, uh, three hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars for this project, so when the bid came in, it was way over our, our budget from FEMA, so what we did, we submitted what's called a cost alignment to FEMA, basically ask for more money based on the bid, and we were actually awarded the one million one hundred fifty thousand after the bid came in that, so we were actually awarded the full value from FEMA to fund the project, which is fantastic. So we had one hundred percent reimbursement from the FEMA public assistance program. There was also a question regarding funding in last year's capital budget, any of the HMP projects that I received from the council, um, because last year it does show in the capital budget that there's three million nine twenty-eight six seventy-two shown as current funding as a bridge twenty twenty-one in the twenty-one, twenty-two capital budget. Now that number has since been updated, and is now two million eight seventy-six three forty-one six two three. Funding is reduced because we actually, um, had to encumber one to pay for the ice renovation campaign, that was awarded at the previous council meeting, to also premium ability. So in other words, the, the number actually gets reduced because we're doing projects, so now it's actually two million eight seventy-six. Now when we actually cut the purchase order to do this project, we're gonna reduce the two million eight seventy-six by the one million one hundred fifty thousand, and we'll have where the balance is left to do hazard conditions.
What we think is on the Sourcewell contract. Once again, this has a, there is a conference call. Menendez signed it, it's just all signed. And I have a motion.
Mr. Menendez, just fine.
All right.
You can just do a motion to replace the entire area.
Yeah. This is my announcer voice. So, uh, all right, so, uh...
You can just do a motion to replace the entire area.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to replace, I don't need to read it. Okay, I'm off the hook.
That's, that's why everything that I put is available online. It's available online. Motion to replace.
Motion to replace.
Wait a second.
I will.
Morning. That's our question.
Yes.
That's what we're asking.
Yes.
That's what we're asking.
Yes.
President Trust.
Yes.
President Ginn.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter agreement with Carrier Corporation in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars to replace the heating ventilation and air conditioning system at the case site. The price was obtained, in this case, by the city under the Sourcewell contract. Um, the city is a member of Sourcewell, the state of Minnesota local government agency, and serves cooperative that offers cooperative procurement solutions to government entities by providing the manpower for government education and nonprofit organizations. The work is going to consist of removal and disposal of the existing system, actually condensing units, et cetera. Installation of two fifteen-ton Carrier split tunnel systems. Custom air handles, complete system, cabin room, controls, electric box. The warranty on it is one year. Um, the new system is solely for the gymnasium. The outside offices are controlled by four weeks of functioning. Um, if you're on information, we also paid a second vote from Premier on a subcontract. Um, their price was one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, so it's a lot of work. Um, work is expected, and this is a big concern of mine, about twelve to fourteen weeks in the long-term time of some of this stuff. So, um, we're really under tight time constraints. Um, funding is available in half of the budget, therefore I recommend we work the project. Um, I got the city manager mentioned previously, um, that, you know, during the hard work of Monique and Donna herself, um, that it seems like here that this is all going to be reimbursed in a year, one hundred forty-one thousand, through the CBG program. Um, so then at that point, I'll work with the controller and we will replace the funds. Because right now, for example, we're exhausting one hundred thousand dollars from a capital line that was just borrowed, and that was really, so basically exhausting the whole line that we're going to use for all buildings. So, we're ready to replace that line up, up to five of them specifically. Um, so, I think that's my summary, if you have any questions, I'd have to answer.
I just want to come in again, thank you to Monique, Ina, and Donna for being innovative and finding the funds for this, uh, for this important expenditure. Exactly the kind of thinking that, that we need, and we like. Any other comments from the council or questions?
I do have a question. Um, Joe, I remember when, uh, we had a Carrier in this building and went down, and we would spend it, and did twelve thousand a week, so ridiculous. Now, now I just have that on fuel, wasn't even included in that budget.
No, it was not.
I didn't watch it, it was not, yeah. But, of course, I am concerned about a one-year warranty. Very concerned. We don't have the ability to fix these things. And I remember when, you know, when it went down, we had to wait weeks for pieces. And that was comparable to... Is there anything we can do about that warranty?
I mean, I, I, you know, in preparation for this meeting, I specifically, because I expected that question. So, and I guess here was one year, and, I mean, I, I, other than getting a separate maintenance contract, I guess that's something we could explore, but we can certainly talk to Carrier about, um, but, you know, and the effort transparency, that, that is most listened to the great agreement that we're voting on tonight. Um, but we should certainly explore some sort of maintenance contract, separate from this.
Any other questions?
Any idea what that was? I don't know, I don't know. Yeah. I just, after the trouble we had with Carrier before.
No, I, I, I appreciate your concerns on that.
I feel the same way about my AC system. Um, any questions from the public?
Well, I just have a question. Does, uh, does this project include any ductwork, or are we just replacing the machine?
They're replacing the, uh, the split units, and they have, they have one ductwork in the control room, yes.
Sorry, some ductwork.
These little bits.
Okay, um, um, questions from the public? We'll start with Mr. Hodge and Mr. Delory. You went this side, Mr. Delory.
It's gonna, that's, that's what I just mentioned, based on your question. I'll, I'll, I'll...
If the sheet that, that said the hundred thousand dollars, um, highlighted the building locations, um, I just confirm with Commissioner, if everything works according to plan, the, the savings or the, the work that Monique Powell has done, or Donna Gay and others, if we get reimbursed for the CBG money for the Carrier unit, I had asked Joe along Councilman Lester's question is, if possible, I think a three, or five, or seven-year warranty at least should be requested, to see what that cost or that price is. And the second question I have is, the thermostat system in the building, can it be, uh, controlled by anybody walking up and pressing the high-low, or is there a, a lock or a mechanism that it can be preset? Um, for example, at midnight, you don't want it at sixty degrees on a negative degree day if nobody's there, that type. I just, I don't know if you know that.
Uh, to answer the first question, what Mr. Delory was referring to is, um, last year's budget, there was a hundred thousand dollars in, um, building, um, renovations. Um, so we're using that whole hundred thousand that was just borrowed, as far as borrowing exercises, that was done in February for this AC project. So, he, what he was, he was asking, he replied, should we get the money back from CBG? The answer is yes, we will. Um, I don't know the answer offhand to the other question regarding the AC that I can certainly find out here. Um, Daniel Bryan, who maintains all buildings in the city, is excellent, and I'm sure he will readily have that answer readily available to you. Is there another question? Well, I'm gonna find that out, because I don't, I don't, you know, tell you truth, I can talk to, um, our building, uh, maintenance person, Daniel Bryan, who's excellent. He will know the answer. Um, and...
What was the question, can you give the warranty?
Yeah, the warranty, as we discussed, I'll, I'll look into that. Because all I know is it does clearly say in the current, um, contract, that it's one year warranty, and I think it's a good idea, I mean, we can explore, an extended warranty is a great idea, you know? And if it's a reasonable cost, we can get the money reimbursed with CBG, you have money.
No. I can't, I don't want to reimburse that.
Oh, they will, okay, there you go.
Is that a capital expense or an operating expense warranty? It's an operating expense warranty for maintenance?
So, I still have to, um, I'll have to talk about this in more detail.
It was a four in your next budget.
Okay.
Mr. Hodge, do you have a question?
Yes. Commissioner, I, I said a lot of great words, you didn't thank me for my great words. Still love you.
I wasn't thought that, but I, I...
Still, I still love you. Uh, James Hodge, uh, still here in this great city, uh, as we continue to make it better than second tonight. Uh, I just want to begin to thank the city, uh, as a community advocate, on board member, and a resident for forty-six years. Uh, I would like to thank the city for looking at the building that our president was in, we were very hot that day, and also John Vendo, when you and the Commissioner came, saw the shine on your head a little bit, you know, sweat flowing, you know, but, uh, you saw how hot it was. So, it's something that you guys saw, and you diligently worked on, and thank, uh, Monique Powell, former executive director of them, okay, and Donna for working on this, and Ina, I don't know if you have a part of this, but thank you too, okay? Thank you. All right, smile, all right, good. All right, so, thank the city council for what you're doing, thank, uh, the community development. Also, I say, let us continue to work with Denise Ford, because she sits on the Nassau County Community Development Committee, and of course, you know, she knows very well how community development works. And then there's, uh, of course, the former community development director, which Monique Powell works with Lori Bushini, works with community development, county, and so many others, you know, so, community development can be a major help. And also, when we talk about the centers, and, you know, how money is getting federal dollars and all that through HUD and low to moderate income, we know that our minorities were very undercounted, it's not my words, it's important, it just came out. So, if there was a dollar that we're supposed to get, we're a little bit undercounted, uh, in a community that's supposed to get a certain amount, I don't know, it said six percent or whatever, but we just saw it was coming out. So, again, I just really just want to thank you guys for the diligent work, and also Commissioner, you're still great, I still love you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
I do have one question.
Yes, Mr. Lester.
Yes, um, Donna, I have one D. Uh, there's a hundred thousand if comes CBG, can we, do we need to wait for this year's money, or can we take it from the prior years that we still have? Do you mean person?
CBG.
Yes.
It's coming from prior years.
Good, okay, all right, that's true.
It's coming from our forty-sixth year. We're applying now for forty-eight.
Yeah. All right, and one other question. You said that, you can't put an extended warranty on the CBG money, but if we found a vendor that, let's say, irrationally was selling the exact same machine with a five-year warranty for a little bit more money, they would cover that?
I would say don't pressure low.
I am, you don't...
What we did was, we went to them, asked them to do something that they normally don't do, and Denise Ford was there, so I worked with the legislator. I would not say, I would not go back and say, okay, we found this at this cost. They said, we agreed to, to, to spend the past money to take care of this. So, let's, and then we'll have to, I, I would firmly suggest we just put the, uh, anything else in the operating budget. About building relationships, when I build a relationship, when I go to you and you say yes, I'm not going to come back to the well and say, well, I found something else, and it costs a little bit more money, so can you do this? Because they're doing something for us, more or less, as making sure we spend the money. So, that's why, no.
Okay.
Any other questions on the side? Okay, next side please.
I had a nod to resolution authorizing the city manager to enter, excuse me, to enter into agreement, engineering services for the expansion of the city's office of furniture management, with the lowest responsible proposal.
Okay. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter agreement with H2W for design, construction administration, and construction inspection services for expansion of the office of furniture management on the sixth floor of City Wall, considering council chambers, which is this room, where the cost is ninety-two thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents. Uh, proposals were due in the office of the Palm Republic Works on Friday, January fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. There were five proposals received ranging from ninety-two thousand seventy-eighty-six fifty to one hundred seventy-five thousand six-sixty-six. We have a five-member committee that ranked the proposals based on the criteria in the RFP. In this case, the best or highest rated proposals also was expensive, so it looked that well. Um, just so you know, the cost of the breakdown of that ninety-two thousand figure is designs forty-seven thousand eight ninety-five seventy. Construction administration is eleven thousand three thirty-one sixty. Construction inspection is thirty-three thousand five fifty-nine twenty. Um, the intent of the project to expand, is expand the office of furniture management into the city council chambers. The city council chamber is based on its current configuration, um, is unutilized the best of this, in my opinion. Um, this room is generally utilized only in two city council meetings per month, the occasional work session, zoning board meetings, and various minor events, and there are all the meetings in general. So, the intent is to create a multi-purpose room to support the OEM, where only a man exists, like what I would call. The room can be used for public education, training, for disaster recovery, uh, distribution of furniture resources during catastrophic event, provide disaster assistance for residents. The work that's going to be done includes, we're going to remove these levelled wood patches that, yeah, that's hung up. Uh, we're going to remove the wall patch, we're going to test this for, um, asbestos containing materials, and then we're going to actually, uh, we'll remove for, same thing with the ceiling, we're going to remove this levelled ceiling, we're going to put in a new, um, ceiling grid with the energy efficient lighting. Um, we can do audio visual, as we know, this is not really a great system that we have here, so we're going to put something in that's a little bit better. Um, it'll be like more seating here, so we can actually open the room up to, to maybe, um, as opposed to having, if you can't, we can't do much here with our current configuration is. Um, H2W's performed several projects for the city, including the design of well under sixteen A and closure over open air bases and water treatment plant. Um, one thing I noticed, and there was a question that was issued by council, was that there was three hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-five in the capital budget. Um, that number isn't correct, that was in there. It's actually, I confirmed with the city controller, that's a hundred eighty-four thousand nine seventy-three that's actually available, is not three hundred twenty-seven, two sixty-five, but it is listed that way. Mr. Delory in there, but that's just a mistake.
Well, it's, it's from March of twenty-twenty-one.
It's, it's incorrect.
Yeah, okay.
I did verify the number, it was wrong. Um, so if you have any questions, I'd have to answer them, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Corvizo, can you please confirm that a previous city council already approved this couple of expenditure?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And that the part, that the funds have been borrowed?
Funds have been borrowed, that's correct.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes. Joe, on this, um, this is just for engineering services to prepare the plans.
This is to prepare, prepare plan specifications, but it's also for, uh, construction, inspection, and inspection, so those might be...
I think construction.
Not construction, that'll be a separate bid. One of the first things I'm going to do, if this is awarded, is, um, I have H2W, give me a, uh, an estimate of what this is going to cost, so I can hopefully put it into the capital budget that we're preparing right now, because I don't have, you were asked on how much is going to cost, whether it's two hundred...
You have a guess, right now?
I, I really don't, and I, I don't want to venture to say a guess, but what I'm going to do, so the first thing we're going to do is, I'm under pressure on that, but in the next two weeks, to say I need a real rough, uh, idea of how much this is going to cost, so I can put it in the capital budget, um, it's going to go along with that, so then we can do this project.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions in the council?
Mr. Menendez? Uh, just, just what, if, if we're doing floors, ceilings, or about, why aren't we doing the windows?
That is a whole, you know, that's, that's a structural issue in this building, it's really a whole other, um, bullwhack, so to speak, it's, it's, it's a much more involved project, doing the interior, this is, this is easier, it's less expensive, it's not structural. Um, I don't, I, I would recommend it as a separate project, but honestly, the windows, it's a whole separate project.
The windows a part of the structure?
It's a separate system, yeah, I, I would not recommend doing this interior, um, it's a, it's a whole other, in my opinion, you know, very large project to address the windows.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Miss Cullen?
Janet Cole, Long Beach, um, this is part of the sixth floor, I had sent an email regarding the bathroom, is this going to be included in this part of it?
The bathroom?
Yeah, I had sent, you know, a note saying that it will be done in a few weeks, um, temporarily, and that it won't be totally done, because you did have enough money in the budget, and it would be in the fourth. And I just, I just wanted to know if that, for the bathroom or not?
That's a separate project. We, we do have funding in the budget for renovation of the sixth floor bathroom, but that's not part of this project. Yeah, it could be done by our which made ins, uh, contractors, but it's not part of this project.
Okay, now, should I get that in my head?
So, now, so, basically, um, Joe, the question is, I think, are we on track with that project for this fall?
Um, I have to check with the superintendent, I mean, I'd look for the record of operations to make sure, but it's, it's, it's in their queue. I think it's just a matter of if it's a fall or a spring project, I have to confirm the dates, but it's definitely on track, um, I just can't get around it, it's locked right now.
Okay, I have received an email, December twenty-second, and that it would be done in a couple of weeks, temporarily, and that it would be done over long in the fall.
So, the email that you received, that was the intent, supplies and materials?
Intent.
Yeah, because supplies and materials have been difficult to get, and so, they, they are trying to get it to a, a point where if somebody needs to use it, they can use it, but it will be re-upped. Uh, the last, the last I heard, they were still waiting for some materials to come in to complete that bathroom.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure you guys have seen it, and really, is it just pretty for the residents?
That's why, maybe the sign is not on there tonight, but that is why, there's a sign on there saying, please unite, these restaurants go down to the fifth floor, we are aware that they need to be fixed, we're waiting for the material to get...
I understand, but I mean, there's a, I'm sure you saw it, I'll go on the wall, and anyway, no, it's, you know, it's not part of it.
No, it's not part of that project, no.
Thank you, Janet, and Mr. Delory?
Um, Commissioner, Councilwoman, I think Councilman Ben is going to get, he has about to say, uh, can you put a time clock, uh, in your, in your proposal, uh, Commissioner Corvizo, someone, my three minutes is up, um, or a general clock, I know that came up. And then your window tinting, your window tinting cover?
I was thinking, what I was going to propose at the time, it was, yeah. What I was going to propose is a line, very similar to what's in the OEM, because, um, it is very difficult, especially like in May, with the budget presentation, and we had the screen up, we got that complaint a lot at the sun, at the time we do the presentation, can't, you barely see the screen. So, one of the things we're going to propose, unfortunately, not the windows, but window treatments to hold, you know, to help, um, that situation.
Yeah, that's, he can put nail on the head as far as, we, we use the screen here, um, and Ina, or Joe, or somebody, or, uh, the city manager Gay, or anybody, you can't see the information that's here. Um, and I believe it's in the summertime, you have, uh, setting sun on this side, so...
I remember the complaints last year.
Well, it wasn't really, because I, it was things that I've heard.
Or we could have a one-time recording, it would always happen, it's like a, it was starting right on the screen.
It's just a suggestion to consider, um, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pen, Penta?
Good evening, Sam Pedro, Long Beach, uh, a question I was asked me to ask is, how much of this room is being converted to the OEM space? And so, what are we going to do with the council chambers?
You know, my vision for this room, and this is my vision, is, is, like, we now, on, on the furthest west portion, we have our communication center, which is the police and fire hub. The center area, which is highly utilized, is really for the high-level meetings. So, we want, I'd want to refer to this room moving forward, as you know, we have manager room where we host the council meetings, where we host the, um, zoning meetings. You know what I'm saying, although this will be the OEM, where those meetings are hosted, that's my intent, it won't be changed, it's just going to be a big open room. It won't be, it won't be made smaller, but, uh, by shape of form, it's just going to be, um, movable seats, so if you wanted to, if you're interested, put the seats inside and have one whole room, whether it's tables, or office support services, whether it's attached, you're like, we're doing with neutralizing, and, um, and if something's public systems going, then you have a place to set up. Right now, you really just, this room is, it's just underutilized where it's set up for anything else, in case it was used for functions. So, it's not going to be reduced in any way, shape, or form, and we're also holding council meetings here, we're still having zoning meetings here, so much more.
So, just so I can pass on, this room is not getting shrunk in, it's not changing its size or scope of size of the room, we're just going to be modifying to make it a more functional space? So, more functional, the benches?
Just moving, just really keep, open it up.
No, no permitted structures out there, no?
Nothing like that, I'm not being tactful.
Oh, we're going to use that nice handy work of the, uh, city made progress?
I believe we're going to, actually.
I hope we don't, they did a great job on this, so, all right, that was, we're wondering, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public, Mr. Corvizo?
Jim Corvizo, Long Beach, um, so as I understand it, you're just going to keep the room as it is, you're just going to remove everything in the center?
That's basically, yes.
And you want to fix the ceiling and, uh, now, fixing the floors, if this is the special, that could be done with the disaster, so, you know, help.
Please, please, inside.
If this, if this is going to be addressed, it's, cancer, it's Kentite, it's probably got asbestos in it, so you could have asbestos issue, which is going to totally change the outcome of what's going to be going on here. And it could shut it down, survive the cell wall, and bring in very high-end costly people to remove it. So, and that's just to gain more functional use of the area. So, why can't we just leave the floor, floor the way it is, put some perville over the top a bit, make it look nice and pretty, you know, for three dollars and change a square foot, instead of ten thousand dollars to remove everything? And as far as the center goes, I mean, it's, it's really kind of like a no-brainer, if you're just going to, you know, replace it with other seating capacities, why do we need to spend a hundred thousand dollars on study, when you can have an interior decorator come in, and actually come up with probably an equal amount of great ideas for a lot less money? And then, in addition to that, um, it's really, that's what I came up here to say, kind of quote-unquote, it's. The other thing is, it no longer sounds like an OEM space, it sounds like a social gathering area, where you can have all the functions going on, as opposed to just a single type of thing. And so, what do you do if there is an emergency, and we have other things scheduled, you cancel one, place the other, or, um, you know, is there going to be a backup to, uh, this existing space, which was only completed within this past year? So, is this going to be made the same?
Yes.
So, that's not going to be opened up, and, and I see you're going to be replacing all sorts of audio, video, is that to replace our vocal speaker system? Yeah, okay, that's a good thing. And, and the ceiling too? Okay, and that's probably asbestos as well.
Uh, one, one, correct.
Oh, no, and this is probably asbestos as well, because it's been up there for five months, I'm going to need to correct it. That's pretty much it.
So, yeah, Mr. Corvizo, I just wanted to let you know, um, is that this one? Hello? The things that you mentioned were all contemplated by the RFP, because we know from experience what we had to deal with when we built the OEM office, um, we have provision in there that they have to test the floor to see if it has asbestos-containing material. Um, if it does, we have two options, if it's, if you could go over it, like you mentioned, but that's going to be a recommendation that I have to get from the design engineer, um, because, you know, if you don't disturb it, you have no issues, but, um, that's, that is contemplated by, uh, basically to test this material, um, and they come up with remediation plan, and of course, that's, and you can do the same. Um, so that is contemplated by the RFP, same thing with the ceiling, it's in there, that they're required to have testing done, it's asbestos-containing materials, they're going to come up with a plan to remediate, that's remove it, and then replace it, and that's exactly what we did in the other area. They removed the floors, they removed the ceiling, uh, did remediation, um, and it was done appropriately in accordance with all regulations. Another question?
Um, all the edges and everything would be removed and replaced?
Yeah, yes, they would all be removed and replaced.
Why? Is there any thought as to whether it would be refurbished?
They wouldn't be refurbished at all, I mean...
Yeah, it's too many for me, I have to think of them. Well, square holes is there?
Yes. And it's funny, someone asked me recently, what are those square holes for? I don't know.
I don't.
Do you wonder, do you don't know what that?
No, the ones are retarded. Chuck, the other thing is, is the screen, it is, you can't see it, can't be moved to that side of the roof?
That's part of, that's actually part of the RFP, where it's a pull-down screen in the actual RFP itself. So they've already contemplated that as well.
Moving it to the other side of the roof?
There would be something come from the ceiling and probably the other side, so that's what, that's, what comes from that is the expertise of the design services team that Joe would be.
I can't see anything.
I completely agree, I think, I can't see anything anymore. And, Joe, the OEM room has been operational for over two years, correct?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, not long yet.
Yes, it's been a couple of years.
And you have, that room is in strictly for emergencies, or is it just for any?
No, we use it for all, many high-level meetings, to choose regular.
But sort of.
And ironically, I'm up here in that room, frequenting, and this room is pretty much underutilized, or not utilized during the daytime.
Mr. Deloree, you don't see the OEM room, back to the OEM part, it's locked from the public.
Five minutes, I understand.
Yeah, so that part is strictly for the emergency management, for the DC, the fire department, so, if there is an emergency or disaster, that's where they go.
So also, you spray educational purposes?
This, when this opens up and does that, this would be what every floor is locked, as City Manager, you could have our trainings here, people would have more information, because you could actually see with eight presented, I'd say efficiency is true, Mr. Deloree.
And at the RFP in Sandy, just for example, we had a de-urizing, community reconstruction program personnel, we had the FIBA Public Assistance Program, various volunteer groups, and there's no place to put, there was no place to put volunteer groups, I think they used the upper level of the ice arena to house, house some, but, in my opinion, this could be so much more, I'm not sure if it agrees, but we'll, I think we could do better.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the public? Next item.
And Kansas Resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter agreement for engineering services for rehabilitation of the ice arena roof with the most responsible builder.
Okay, last but not least, this is a resolution authorized for the City Manager to enter an agreement with Cashon Associates, PC, for design, construction administration, and inspection services, for rehabilitation of the ice arena roof and gutter system, in the amount of $99,100. Proposals were due in the Office of Department of Public Works on Friday, December 3rd, 2021. We received five proposals ranging from $99,100 to $167,315. We had a five-member committee evaluating all the proposals based on the criteria in the RFP. In this case, we often select the third best proposal that was the least expensive. So we can go with the most expensive, that was the highest rate, we went with the lowest price in this case. The breakdown of the $99,100 is $57,300 for design, $21,400 for construction administration, and $20,400 for construction inspection. The work includes design for the rehabilitation to replace the roof, and replacement of the garage system on the building. Cashon's a reviable contractor that has most recently completed design services for our police HVAC system, that's right outside the window down here. Therefore, I recommend ordering to Cashon, just wanting to get the capital budget for this exercise, and the cap is numbered listed in the resolution. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Joe, this is for, again, engineering project.
That's correct.
First of all, I have to say, we got five bids, what if you didn't write?
Okay, so we got five, we got five proposals.
That's amazing. But anyway, and I believe the money to actually do this project is already in the budget.
It's in the capital budget, it was just bar, actually, February, last month?
Yeah.
It was approved in the last May, and voted on July, correct? I apologize, it's July.
The capital budget was approved in May, the resolution to authorize the bar was approved in July.
Correct.
And this, this 99 was part of that?
Yes.
This is the, this is the first step?
Yeah.
In the process.
At least in this one, you kind of know how much we're going to spend for this.
Again, it's an estimate.
Yeah.
One of the first things when I work with Cashon is to develop the scope of work, what has to be done, and then they will give you an estimate, it could be less, you know, it could be more, and then if it's more, I have to ask for more money in the capital budget for that work.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Nothing?
Okay, starts with item number three, which is a resolution authorized to file an application to County of Nashville, for the purpose of taking a community development program to title one of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and title two of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, as amended, for included inclusion in the city's community development program for the total two, 2020, twenty-eight year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorized transfer of funds for twenty-one, twenty-two this year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorized transfer of funds for twenty-one, twenty-two this year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorized transfer of funds for twenty-one, twenty-two this year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Mr. Bendo?
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes, when I heard this, I was very happy to hear we're getting a three-year warranty of this engine, but it's a limited mod, and that's a great deal, it's a personal concern, so, yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Okay, item seven is a resolution authorized to City Manager to enter agreement for housing mitigation work, to reform the one with the two center of the most responsible builder. Would you just move the adoption of this item, as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorized to City Manager to enter agreement for replacement of the HVAC system that's in the one with the two center, already installed. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Given the fact that this is a one-year warranty, basically, if just one season, I'm going to have to say, well, this is.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution authorized to City Manager to enter agreement for engineering services for expansion of the city's office, project management, and the most responsible builder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Given the fact that we aren't so uncertain of the actual cost of this project, to spend $92,000 at this point, we might not even be able to afford the project.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Yes.
Finally, item ten is a resolution authorized to City Manager to enter agreement for engineering services for rehabilitation of the basic neighborhood with the most responsible builder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
No. I would like to see more analysis on the building itself before we proceed with any design services or future capital expenditures.
City Manager, open personnel report filed by City Clerk, we make motion closely.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Oh, and Councilor Postle?
Yes.
Councilor Lester?
Yes.
Councilor Bendo?
Yes.
Vice President Trustee?
Yes.
President Gibbs?
Andrew Keen. Andrew Keen, Long Beach, good evening. I have questions on two topics. The first one is the Haberman settlement that was discussed at the special meeting held on December 28th, where it was explained that a potential settlement had been reached of $149 million, claims $75 million. That was preceded by the retention of a very modest legal firm, Melveney &amp; Myers, a year ago, where they, at one of these city council meetings, discussed various options that they were going to explore. They include bankruptcy, they included being absorbed, which I took to mean by some other municipality, in addition to negotiating the settlement. We heard nothing, we, the residents of Long Beach, about the work of O Melveney until the December 28th meeting. And at that time, the presentation was, we have two choices, we could pay $149 million, or we could pay $75 million, and there was no option, see? That doesn't sound accurate to me, because we were told that there were other options. They may not be the best options, but there were other options. In addition, there had to be at least one viable option, because why would someone who was owed $149 million accept $75 million? So I think before the tax, the residents of the city have to fund the settlement with increased taxes, I think we are owed an explanation, and it may be that the $75 million is the best alternative, of why the other alternatives were not, were rejected, and instead, the city was given to pay $75 million. My second question relates to Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics. And I raised this at a meeting a month ago, and, because the city has no Board of Ethics, and I was told, and it has no Board of Ethics, tonight, a month later, I was told the city hasn't had a Board of Ethics for years. And what troubled me about that, it seems that the city council views that as optional or discretionary on its part. And there was some mention about the charter of the city, and there was also some mention that the duties of the Board of Ethics are essentially ministerial, in making sure certain disclosure forms are filed. And that's not accurate, you're much more expansive than that. And my question is, why does the city council view that as being discretionary, when the city charter doesn't make discretionary? My reading is that it makes it mandatory that you appoint the Board of Ethics. It also makes it mandatory that every city employee get a copy of the Code of Ethics, which is outlined in the charter, which is quite good. So my question is, if you believe it's mandatory, why hasn't it been done? And do employees get a copy of the Code of Ethics?
Thank you, Mr. Keen, you sent me an email?
I did.
And I'm going to verify, I don't want to speak out of term, whether they, when the last time they received it, when they received it, but for the Board of Ethics for the council, that is, that's in the code, that is currently being worked on, that is, I have someone working on it, making sure that the code is in compliance with the state. That change should come before the council at the last meeting in the month of April, and once that, the ordinance and the code is voted on, then they can do the Board of Ethics. There were a lot of questions that were asked, and what I want you to know, that it is currently being worked on, and the plan is for it to come up for a vote at the last meeting.
I ask what's the changes for me?
I don't have the changes, we're working on them, we're making sure, whatever the state says, we have to have, it's Code of Ethics in there, in the policy or in the ordinance that we follow that, we're looking at other municipalities, so I can't speak what they are currently, because I haven't received the draft, but it is currently being worked on.
About the requirements of the charter of the city?
All of that will be changed once we have the draft, and everyone agrees on that that is current, and that's what, that's what the council will get at the last meeting. So your question was, why hasn't it been worked on? The answer is, it's being worked on right now.
Well, my question was, why hasn't, hasn't the city had one for years?
I can't say.
It's clearly spelled out, I can't say.
I'm sorry, Tom, it's not that we haven't had one for years, that hasn't been needed for non-years, but there was a charter until recently, there was a Board of Ethics. Never met, but there was a Board of Ethics until about two years ago.
And I had a question regarding the Haberman settlement?
I can't discuss that at this time, but I will talk to the attorneys, and they ask them to include that in their next presentation.
Okay, I think it's particularly relevant, considering there's an additional, as you explained, $350 million in long-term debt owed by the city. So whatever decision you make with regard to Haberman impacts that as well. So I think some information needs to be provided, so that taxpayers who have funded all of this know that it would feel comfortable that it was the best decision.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Keen, Mike Deloree.
Good evening, Mike Deloree, Long Beach. I'm sure you guys are getting a lot of comments about the proposed parking plan. I fully support your efforts in moving forward with the parking. To piggyback, I heard what Mr. Keen just said, the reason why I think the parking program is important, is this city needs new forms of revenue, consistent, long-term sources of revenue. Naming rights is just one-shot wonders, they don't last. So hopefully, this process is moving forward to your likeness. You will hear many people complain about parking. If you look at the history of parking, the reason why they moved it is because coins went in, but coins did not go to where they intended to go. This system works, it works in other places as well, and I'll further support all of your efforts in trying to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Dean Epstein.
Hello, Dean Epstein, 200 Blackfield Road. Wow, good timing, because I can, as you probably know, talk about the potential source of revenue. One which is much more popular than, and the parking is being proposed, as I demonstrated last year. I'd like to start, though, on a slightly less pleasant note, I just wanted to voice my objection. I just wanted to voice my objections to some of the portrayals of our petition in the meeting's last agenda. I felt there were details in that description that were irrelevant, and for which I could see no other purpose, that the category is hardworking activists as stereotypical stoners. Everyone's council, I'm sure, has petitioned themselves with volunteers, and they know that the petition process is not necessarily neat, so I just didn't really see the need to speak to the conditions of the papers that were turned in, and it seemed a little unnecessary. Anyhow, all of us activists, like everyone here, just want to support the community. Anyhow, moving on, I'm sure that you've learned since last week that the first licenses for cannabis retail in the state are intended to go to people, and people whose families have been affected by cannabis prohibition, particular people have been, particularly people have been arrested, or the cannabis people have been arrested. Now, this is especially pertinent in Nassau County, where between two thousand and ten and two thousand and seventeen, seven thousand five hundred people have been arrested, or sorry, seven thousand five hundred arrests have been made for possession of cannabis. Now, among those arrests, excuse me, all right, among those arrests, sixty percent of those arrested in Nassau were black or Latino, and even those, and that's despite the fact that those groups make only thirty percent of the population, and that's countless studies have shown that all races use cannabis at opposite rate. Now, as far as sentencing, of the white people who were arrested, who were arrested, seventy-five percent which received a quill or ACOD, ACD, sorry, whereas only sixty-five percent of those men have received the same, and fifty-three percent of blacks. So in the county of Nassau, there's a great disparity in not just arrests, but sentencing for cannabis possession. Now, I'm not trying to put anyone here on the list, because there are obviously kind of high statistics, and not necessarily anything to do with you guys, but I'm just trying to say that this is, like, that this is a phenomenal opportunity to try to advance social equity in our city, and we shouldn't sleep on it. The housing segregation, the historical disenfranchisement of black people in this community is apparent. Dr. King commented on it when he visited during the sixties, and it's still clearly visible. So we have an opportunity here, and not to help, I mean, I'm hard pressed to think of any black-owned businesses in this town. So I think we have an opportunity here to help the communities that have been most adversely affected by cannabis prohibition, not just black and Hispanic communities, white as well, but I think we have an opportunity to help create social equity. And I also wanted to say last night, I just also wanted to point out that if we are the first to opt-in in this area, because I don't think that our part, Oshin Side Town has to opt-in, we're going to get all that revenue from all those surrounding towns, so I think that's worth considering too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. I just want to respectfully disagree with your comment that you found the commentary on the condition of the petitions not acceptable to you. I think that's a mischaracterization on our part. The city manages to manage those positions in a completely professional manner, so I respectfully disagree with you on that.
I understand. I meant, I mean, there was respect, I just want to be clear, it came of a certain way to me, and I thought it was.
I understand, you're exactly right.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodge.
Save some of my voice.
You're taking your minutes there, are you?
Taking my minutes? Well, one, I would like to thank you for your passionate, your passionate speech at the temple. I would like to also take a moment, silence for those in Ukraine. Thank you. Also praying for family members of Roy Lester, I believe your parents were from Ukraine. Your father. So we're continuously praying for your family members, and family members that are still there, fighting as the president of Ukraine is so, he's such a hero, and learning all the things about him, that it doesn't come from politics. He was a comedian, an actor, and all those things. Yet he's in the streets, not hiding, he's in the streets, and he's standing up for the people. He's a true hero, looking to fight for those that are tragically being murdered and killed throughout the streets by a, someone that should face war crimes, someone that should meet his maker, the way God, I'm praying to God that war stops, and I'm praying to God that God just send peace in Ukraine, and that God, because after all that we do, the most powerful person in this whole universe, in this whole place that we call Earth and outside of Earth, is God. So I ask God, give, give those their peace, and war stop. Also, would like to thank God for the opportunity of working with the late Michael Taggman, thank him for his work, thank him for being a boss, thank him for me having the opportunity to work under his, to the ladies, and all that he has done for the city of Long Beach. Coach, tenant, city manager, many different things, mentor, I was in animal control, but he was my direct force in the police department, and I also was a school crossing guard, and he taught me a lot, because he was in traffic for many years, and then actually started a traffic post there on Riverside and Fulton many years ago with me, and actually painted the lines on Riverside. So I thank him for all that he's done, and all that he means to Long Beach. His life and legacy still lives on through his children and his family. So again, let us continue to work together from the east, the west, the north, and the south, and let us continue to just show love towards one another, because we're stronger together and united. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. And Lomen Haft?
Good evening. Can you hear me? A little bit louder. Hey, hey, hi. My name's Anne Lomen Haft, I live on Franklin Boulevard in Long Beach. I was part of the grassroots group that organized the signature collection drive, all ended councils opt-out last December. Just wanted to clear up some things at the top of the meeting, on top of my time that were left vague from the last meeting. I think it was Councilman Lester that brought up that it wasn't immediately clear to us and the public how to work on the premises referendum, because the law stated that we needed to collect signatures from ten percent of the voting population in the last gubernatorial, and the voter turnout for Long Beach in two thousand and eighteen had to be foiled as a city clerk, which took ten days to proceed, cutting into our signature collection time. So, all that being said, tossing that aside, now I want to talk about the new regulations that came out last week for the MRTA law. I hope you're all well aware, have read them, and studied them, and looked at the fact sheets, because they're what you all were looking for, but they were released last week, and now they have condensed fact sheets. There's twelve different types of licenses that individuals can apply for. I'm just going to be talking about two today. The adult-use cannabis, adult-use retail dispenser license, and the adult-use onsite consumption, which is what our group is fighting for. And so I just want to get into the regulations. So the taxation structure is split into three types of taxes. One relevant for the body today is, one of them is a local excise tax imposed on the sale of cannabis products by a retailer to a cannabis consumer at four percent of the product's price. These taxes are distributed to local governments based on where the retail dispensary is located. Twenty-five percent of the tax goes to the county, and seventy-five percent goes to the cities as, within the county as a proportion of cannabis sales. For the last council meeting, we brought up that there's a one-million-dollar negative variance, maybe this is one way to start making that up. So how does the tax revenue work? All adult-use cannabis taxes will be deposited into the New York State Cannabis Revenue Fund, and within all of that, twenty percent is specifically marked for drug treatment and public education. That means the money will be expended by the Office of Addiction Services and Support for the following purposes, including youth public health education and prevention campaign, as well as the substance abuse disorder treatment program. That's two among the many different programs that this, you know, revenue will serve. So other really great things that my friend Nate also mentioned is, we're going to have the first-in-the-nation initiative for physicians for New York farmers and individuals with prior cannabis-related offenses to comprise early adult-use cannabis supply chain. So there's a really great social and economic equity program within the MRTA, which means that people from disproportionately impacted communities, impacted by the enforcement of cannabis prohibition, which means minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, minority and women-owned businesses, and service-disabled veterans can apply, get a special license. So the last thing I'll just say is that there's also a two-million-dollar fund by the state to help the early licenses from those groups to get started. That means one million dollars in their pockets of starter fund. So my questions to the panel.
Thank you. Thank my questions. Thank you. Thank you. We can continue to set the next meeting, or you can send your emails, you can contact the city manager's office if you would like to discuss further.
Can I just have one question?
Thank you for your time, your time is up.
What do you have to say to the women, disabled service veterans, and minorities in Long Beach where you are denying the social mobility and equity by opting out of retail dispensaries and consumption sites? Thank you.
Jared Cohen.
Good evening, everyone, in my last. I will be brief, I know you don't want to get a person in between you and the door. First, I just want to bring some public recognition to Mr. Frizzio. I know it's not that easy to present these types of things to the public, and I can imagine that for the hour he was out here, probably took ten hours of work and research. There's a lot of complexities, and we, and we appreciate that. The second thing is, I also want to, I was talking to Mr. Deloree before regarding the parking plan and parking meters, and the idea the city's working really hard on looking to offset revenue, so we don't have to rely on taxpayer taxes on the community, and I think it's a great thing that we're moving forward with this. One of the concerns that we're poised to be is that if we're integrating paid parking in business district, how will that impact residential areas? And people are concerned, specifically those who live on Wall Street, or who live up in the business district, are people going to say, you know what, I'm going to avoid parking meters just for the fact of avoiding them, and now shifting their parking practices into residential areas, which kind of already happens now because of the lack of parking, but they're concerned that it's going to be a greater shift, so people don't park. So I know it's probably on the mindset of those involved, I just want to echo that it is a concern of the residents, and if we can put safeguards or controls, or really integrate that it's going to be a resident-focused, resident-beneficial parking plan, it'll help accommodate, prevent that ease, and also make sure that it's a holistic approach to parking that helps offset the costs around the city. So those are the two things, and I'd say thank you again.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, everyone.